As far as I know, I've already told them that we won't eat the extra cost on that. Basically, we've accommodated them enough. We've accommodated them enough here over the past six months to get them.
That's their decision.
Right, right. I mean, we kind of urged them to use the M mix just to be able to open the road quicker.
Yeah.
But they made the ultimate call. We can't force them to do that.
If something happens, we can flip them around.
We've got the flexibility to slide them up. The year one projects, those are the ones that are pretty well locked in place, but anything near two through five, we can slide them around. Or if something were to happen with one of the structures, we could do an emergency.
Right.
And pull that project out.
And you just, because it's easier, because you understand and know what you've got on all these without looking back and forth. So like Bruce was saying, what are the, well, let's just go all the way out the furthest to 2024. Just real brief description of what goes out that far.
Twenty twenty four had, the first project is BROS project, so that's a bridge replacement project using state money. Eighty percent state, twenty percent local. Twenty eight is paving project going into Renwick using farm to market money. Twenty nine is a mile and a half paving project. It's on the Rutland Extension that has a lot of truck traffic.
Going to West?
Yeah, that, that east, that one and a half mile stretch between County K and Highway one sixty nine.
Oh.
And then project number thirty is Hardy South to Highway three, and that's STP money, so that's also state grant money. So we will get a million dollars towards that project.
Excellent. Also, it sounds like good long-term projects.
Right.
Very good.
That's five miles. We'll end up having to pay about one mile ourselves.
Yeah, we'll end up paying for about a half to one mile ourselves, so we'll end up paying about two hundred thousand on that project.
Okay. Which, what, what was it? Which bridge is the bridge replacement on the number twenty?
Twenty seven is on Hawaii Avenue. I think they call them Buffalo Wilson's corner. It's bridge number sixty nine for us.
Northwest to Boode.
Yep. So if you look, twenty seven uses BR project money. Twenty four is Bridge Thirty Three down on Iowa Avenue, south of C forty nine. Bridge twenty is the Lone Tree Arch project. That's going to be a bridge. I guess twenty four and twenty seven, I'm looking at large. Twenty four will be an eight by eight box culvert, probably. Twenty seven will probably be like Clifford Hellens. It'll be a fourteen by fourteen box, large box. Twenty is the Beaver Arch. That's going to be a bridge of some sort. I mean, that's going to be a half a million dollar bridge, probably.
That one's located where about, number twenty?
Down on Lone Tree, the south end of the county.
You're probably familiar.
Oh, yeah. It's a busy road.
That's a bridge, bridge.
That'll be a bridge, bridge, yeah. It's a, it's a brick and concrete arch right now that the county raised probably twenty, twenty-five years ago. They raised it five feet by putting timber piling on either side and then cross tying it with cables. So basically, it's good as long as the wood's not rotten and the cables hold.
And that's what, twenty?
That's number twenty.
Twenty twenty two, so.
About three years, yeah.
Well, we've got a BR project scheduled for pretty much every year. Right now, they contribute about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year towards the county for bridge replacement.
So you can, you can accumulate that, then?
Right.
And that's kind of why, especially the ones we're talking about further out.
And, and, and they can, they can, obviously, I can slide them down if we don't have the funding available. It is how the BR project works, basically, scheduled. To schedule it, there's certain criteria that have to be met. It's got to be more than twenty-five vehicles a day. It's got to be below a sixty sufficiency rating. And it's got to be described as structurally deficient or functionally obsolete by the end of the year. So those are the three main criteria that we would have.
Well, just curious to, you know, look a little further out, but I believe you've got a robust project scheduled for, you know, use of the money and track of it, so that's, that's a good thing. Otherwise, we kind of know what we're doing here in near term.
Right. Yeah, I mean, most all the projects in that first year, you guys have all seen between work sessions. And one we approved, the county side of the budget this year.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Basically, the, the next thing that I've got on the agenda is to approve the Humboldt County fiscal year twenty twenty, Iowa D O P secondary road private and secondary road construction program. The budgetary numbers are everything that we've seen on the local side. Basically, you pulled, you pulled the numbers that you've already budgeted and have approved on the county side and created into the D O P.
Well, those are bigger numbers, and I want to make a motion. I guess you can put me down, Peggy, for making a motion to accept that.
Since you stepped up, I'll say second.
It's only scary if you say it out loud.
Well, I'm just looking at your information you put together. We've got from actual expenditures, you know, from prior years to where we're at this fiscal year, looking at next fiscal year. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking at the very bottom line total. Hopefully, I'm looking at the right sheet.
The very bottom line of?
Yeah, on the very back, this one, the back page where it says you've got two prior, current, next. Correct me if I'm wrong, but when it says total, for next year, it's less than prior years.
For the total amount of receipts? Yeah. If you look at first year prior and current year, we had the expenditure of C forty nine.
C forty nine.
Except out of local expenses, that was two and a half million dollars that we spent out of local money. That's more money to account for, basically. That's the, the larger number that you see for your totals there.
And the other, the one year before on the detour that we used for the highway bridge up towards the Foxter Bridge on that road, then?
Uh, yeah, that was.
That was a year before?
That was twenty seventeen, I believe. Yeah, basically, we've got more paving scheduled is what it boils down to with local funds is why your, your last number is higher on those.
Well, I'm looking at the very far in twenty twenty, next year, estimated expenditures of six million, seven hundred thousand.
Total money? Actually, if you look at, that's the total, that's the number that we have to match. Total expenditures is two columns above that, that's four point seven million.
Right.
Your total income is on the previous page. Basically, we just scheduled for what we have income.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, this is basically the numbers that you guys already approved on the county side of things. Total receipts, if you look at the number between the bottom of page two and the bottom of page three, those two numbers balance out.
Yep.
Look at page three, the second to last column, basically, the auditors balancing the same. Scheduled for next year as it is last year. We're not overspending anything. We're, we're basically expending what we're getting for income or what we're projecting for income for next year.
Any other questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Carrie.
The second one is we approve the Humboldt County fiscal year twenty twenty Iowa D O P secondary road construction program.
You have to do this every year?
Yes, every year. It has to be completed by April fifteenth.
I'm guessing it hasn't changed from last year.
For that.
This ordinance.
Oh, no, no, this is, this is the budget portion. We have to approve them each separately.
Right.
We approved the budget, now we're on the construction.
On the construction, okay.
We've gone through all this, so I'll make a motion to approve the secondary roads construction program for twenty twenty.
Second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both?
No, my question was on the ordinance. Sorry, I skipped the line. Pardon me. That was my question on the, uh, construction reconstruction of road lanes and bridges.
Right, so one of the things that Paul and I had started working on a couple of years ago, and we never got to completion or to this point, was to create an ordinance for the county that in the event that we have one of these FEMA events, like they had over in Western Iowa, where they did lose a bridge or they did lose a structure, you have to have an ordinance in place that says that basically you're not going to replace that structure with a like kind. So if, say, the flood was bad enough this year that we would have lost Burton River Bridge, if we would not have had this ordinance in place, FEMA would have came in and basically asked us to replace that with a similar structure. So a hundred and twenty-five year old high truss, that's only fourteen, eighteen feet wide.
We need to put a fourteen foot wide bridge back in.
Right, so basically, by creating this ordinance and enacting it by the county, it covers us that in the event of a FEMA event, we have a minimum replacement standard that says that even though we know we lost an old wooden timber bridge up in northeast part of the county, we only replace with concrete and it's a minimum of twenty-four feet wide on gravel road and a minimum of thirty feet wide on paved road.
Yeah.
Basically, we're, we're covering by, by going through this, we're covering our butts in the event that we do have a FEMA event that we lose a structure.
That they would provide money for.
That they would provide money for.
Do they pay attention to such ordinances?
Yes, yes. Actually, a good portion of this was reviewed and recommended by FEMA from another county.
Almost like insurance of replacement cost versus, I mean, you know, just to make a slight analogy, but.
And I can't get into how FEMA's going to value it if we did lose a bridge that is a hundred and twenty years old. You know, if they said, okay, well, if you depreciate it down, here's what the value is worth, here's what we'll pay you for replacement. But this basically says that FEMA can't come in and tell us that we have to replace it.
With the like kind structures, yeah.
Would it also change, we could change like the location, like the Murray Bridge where you've always, always wanted to move that off that curve? We could have that ability if something like that happened?
Yes, we would.
Good.
Okay, good thing I have done that.
Well, that's the gist of most of what the ordinance is for.
That, that is exactly what this ordinance is for, is basically to protect us in the event that we, that we lose a, a structure or if we lose a paved road that, you know, we can replace that paved road.
Does this have any jurisdiction back to anything past FEMA that you just described?
Any.
Does it, does it, would it have any bearing on any other catastrophes other than, because FEMA is federal money for, you know, bridge replacement?
The federal declaration.
Would it have anything otherwise? I mean, does it, does it pertain to anything other than the FEMA money, really?
Not really. I mean, for the most part, it just describes, basically, what we consider our, our minimum standards. It covers a little bit as far as our level of service. It describes what we can, what we consider a paved road as far as twenty-two foot wide. Unpaved roads, it describes that we've got a twenty-eight foot top for most of our unpaved roads. But the, the nuts and bolts of it, the, the main reason is to cover us in a FEMA.
Basically stating everything that you, guidelines that you follow anyway.
Right. We've got, we've got existing ordinances that, that cover how we handle Level B, Level C roads. It does touch on that a little bit on here, but.
I see that.
We've got additional ordinances that cover us for those. So if you get for bridges, this is mainly for bridges and smaller structures. If we were to lose a cross pipe under the road, we don't have to replace it with the same size.
We did have a bridge moved, well, we didn't, but it did cross the, moved.
Moved?
Moved. From the floods, it moved about twelve inches. Are we talking trail bridge? Yeah.
I would make a motion to adopt ordinance number seventy.
I'll second. Okay, first, you have to approve the first reading.
All right, approve.
I'll second.
I thought we had to adopt it before we.
We have to approve it.
We have to get through our three readings.
Not at the first reading.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Carrie.
Ben, thanks for doing this and looking out for the whole town.
I'll make a motion to waive the second and third readings because I don't think this is a real controversial subject.
Nope. I'll second that.
Any discussion? We have to have roll next one.
Next one.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carrie. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number seventy.
I'll second the motion.
Now we need to roll the ball. Carrie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Ruth?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Anything else, Ben?
I believe that's all I have. We're going to continue blading roads and trying to fix where frost coils are coming up and, you know, where we've got some rutting. Hopefully, we got some good sunshine and a little bit of breeze.
Next couple of days.
Yeah, for a few days anyway before Mother Nature comes back.
Are you all on any rock?
Yes.
You are all on rock?
Yep, we are on rock. We're pulling in shoulders on paved roads.
That's awesome. That really is.
So hopefully, that cuts down on any of that amount of edge route material.
Oh, I think it's, I saw that in practice last year, pulling in the shoulders.
They really were?
Yeah, it does. So that's a good deal. So you're just, you're after it as hard as you can. I know there's a lot of damage from the winter. It seems like it was, for whatever reason, it just worsened.
It's worse than normal.
Yeah, there is more, more frost coils this year than there have been.
In the city of Hope.
I noticed the roads are.
I don't know, way more problems than they've ever had.
I know, we've gotten a couple of calls on Drag Strip Road. We do have a contractor lined up for that. A pavement doctor will come in when he has time, I guess, and basically fix all of the spots on Drag Strip. I know Dave and I talked last week about it, but he did call me back on Friday and said, I'll get to you guys. He goes, it might be on a Saturday that I get to you. He's like, I'll just give you a couple of days' notice so that we can get all of the loose material out of the holes. So then he can come in on, on Saturday and just fill them in.
When do they run their drags? Saturdays?
Saturdays, starting in May. So hopefully, he can get to us this month before they come in.
Okay, well, thank you, Ben.
I need your second one.
Uh, I guess that's just a notification to you guys to let you know that paving operations are going to be starting. They're hopeful a week from today to start milling on the Hardy North project. They're projecting that it'll take a week to do that milling project, and then they'll jump over and start the milling on the Bog Rutland Stretch of Roads. Paving, they're anticipating will be at the beginning of May, starting on the Hardy Stretch up at the north end, paving towards Hardy.
Okay.
So obviously, we'll keep you guys updated if.
How far will they change into Hardy?
Basically, we'll be stopping right where the road turns and runs west on C twenty-six.
Oh, okay.
And then everything from that portion south will be picked up in year five on that paving project.
Okay.
In your experience with paving, under good conditions, good working conditions for them, what do they get linear mile paving in a day?
In a day, they can get both lanes, a mile to a mile and a half a day. Obviously, the closer to the plant, the more they can, further they can pave. And they'll be starting with the furthest away project, basically, up at the county line. So those first few days, they'll probably be looking at, yeah, I would say three quarters to a mile until they get closer to the plant, and then it will get better.
So like, what's the distances approximately of those projects?
Uh, Hardy North is six and a half miles and Rutland to Boad is seven miles. You're talking the length of paving? Yes.
The distance, yeah. So you're a week, give or take.
Yeah, you're basically a, a week to two weeks barring breakdowns, weather.
Good. That brings back old memories. The last year, motors, the, there's snow, the, we got to have better luck this year.
Oh, yeah. And their paving, if that goes right, is first part of May for the start of their paving.
Yes.
They're going to do the milling first.
They'll do the milling first on this project, and then they'll start paving, like I said.
Like Bruce said, you would think the law of averages would be in everybody's favor. So it'd be a pretty smooth project.
Everything by Memorial Day, children's and everything.
Awesome. It would be. I would, we'll keep cautious optimism.
Appreciate that.
All right. Okay, thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Citizens beware.
I don't have a number on the.
Stop, you stop.
Claims that you want to do that before so they can do their vote.
Okay.
Peggy stepped down.
We don't do the claims?
Yeah.
I wonder if I should wait for Peggy to come back in. Probably better.
Go ahead, look further in.
Okay. Oh, I'll make a motion for the claims of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Two four nine.
Four, six, eight, five, eight.
Backing on that.
Second that.
What I got.
Nothing drainage?
I didn't see any drainage.
No.
It's a dry week.
Wow.
Well, that'd be the first time.
I was going to say, wow.
First time we haven't spent any money in.
I'm like, when you first said the numbers, I'm like, huh?
Fifty-four thousand on your cameras and door locks.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on it?
I'll tell you, what, she just mentioned cameras and door locks. I'm wondering if why it's fifty-four thousand is because the original one didn't have the cameras.
No, the original one was just the locks.
Can we ask Peggy that quick?
Oh, okay.
We got a quick question for you too. The original quote was around thirty. Was that, and the claims were fifty-four or something? Was that because of the addition of the cameras, just roughly? Because I don't...
Do what you're talking about.
On the, paying for the high tech door locks and the cameras?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead. No.
That was, originally, we were thinking it was twenty-nine, thirty thousand, but then ended up being fifty-four. Did we not have the camera systems included on the original estimate?
That's correct. It was just the door locks on the first one.
Yes, that's what we thought, but...
Did I match the quotes back and, and they matched, except for, um, the door locks because we cut that way back from the original.
But the extra would have been the cameras, basically, of this, for this payment.
Yeah, there were two separate invoices, one for cameras, one for door locks.
Okay.
So if you wanna see the split, it's...
No, it was in the claims.
No, we just, yep, that's all we have.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Gary. Okay. Don Reifer.
Have you signed this yet? You signed this?
No.
Hi, Don.
Good morning.
Morning.
Looks like we're gonna have a couple of good mornings before it changes again.
The day of tomorrow.
Yeah.
I guess all we get is one at a time that we'll take.
I guess. They're talking today, I think, for us in the seventies.
Yeah, I heard Des Moines, they were talking mid-seventies. It's like, well, I guess you guys take what you get, we'll take...
I talked to one of my contacts up north and they said that, uh, the forecast, they went from a foot to eighteen inches of snow to a mixed now. And, you know, it's not here or yes or no, although I'm proud of it.
Right.
So I think for us, we're just supposed to get rain.
Right.
So. And what I've got here this morning, as always, I bring in a quote for your, your drainage brush control. And the, the kind of revise, or not revise, but review the, uh, rotation. The way that county has split up the, the drainages in thirds, it's actually from Highway, uh, one sixty-nine west and the Highway three is one-third. And going the other way on three is another third. And then from tree south is the, the third that, uh, that's actually the one we're looking at this year.
South of three?
Yeah. I do have quotes made up here that I brought. And I guess, uh, I used to, I think if you guys remember, uh, I used to bring around a packet that I would up here every year with the chemicals and, and, uh, different products that we may use in drainage. And now what I do instead of handing out the, uh, packet with all the chemicals listed, uh, if you went on the, uh, price list I have there and if you wanna write down a, a website that we use that has all of the chemicals, if you wanna check the chemicals out for any reason, uh, that is cdms.net. And any of the products that are listed there, with the exception of the Platoon, for some reason, they don't have that listed, but, uh, that's just a two-four D game, basically. But any of these products that I have listed there will be on that site if you wanna check anything out there as far as what we're using. All these products do have a ditch bank label, uh, which means they can be sprayed from the water to the crop. We do have several in here that have full aquatic labels in case we get in a situation where the trees are growing, you know, sometimes wills will grow right in the, in the channel. If that happens, what the guys will do is they'll contact me and they'll say, "We'll skip that schedule, come back and body curbside." And as far as the pricing, as always, uh, these are individual prices for each district and lateral. Uh, there's a total maximum quote for the district. The reason for that is, uh, as you all are pretty much aware, is, uh, each one of these has to be built separately to the, the landowners that benefit from the drainage in the, in the district. Uh, that's why they're all pulled out separately. I make sure there's enough on the quote on the top end so we could, like last week when I went with the ditches I described from bridge to bridge and look out there and try to get an idea of what's, uh, what we're gonna run into. If there's something around the corner, the guys, you know, say there's a big willow path or something that I don't see from the road, it, it's covered, uh, on the front end. I do have two, go ahead and go through that with you real quick here. The last three years of quotes, uh, opposed to the actual, in two thousand and sixteen, the quote was thirty-two thousand, five hundred and the actual amount billed was nineteen thousand, three fifty-one for all the, uh, all the districts. And two thousand and seventeen, the quote was forty thousand. The actual amount to the bill was twenty-two thousand, one twenty-five. And last year, the quote was thirty-one, seven fifty, and the actual amount billed was twenty-four thousand, sixty-six, sixty-four. That just gives you an idea. And basically, uh, the most important sheet there is the, the brush control rate sheet. That's what we build from. And then when we do the billing, uh, you get a copy of the daily spray record and an invoice as well as a map of what was sprayed. And then on those spray records, on the bottom, there'll be a little check-off box there for the guys for washouts and, and beaver dams. And, uh, if, if it's checked that they did find a washout or beaver dam, they'll note the section. And what I try to do too is contact the county to, and say, "Hey, we've been looking for this," or a highlight on the invoice. They have found several beaver dams the last couple of years. As far as the washouts, you know, you were talking about how, uh, bad shape the dirt's been. Uh, be looking at ditches here.
They get a lot of bad spots.
There's a lot. In fact, there was too much to note. I mean, there was just a lot of slumping. Uh, the bottom, bottom half of the ditch, you know, the most important part of the ditch to have good grass on. And a lot of them, some are halfway up.
Yeah, slid right to the bottom.
Right down to the bottom. And this has been the worst I've, I've seen in all the years I went to ditches. You always see a little bit of that, but this year it's widespread and there's a lot of it. So I don't know, you know, what you're gonna, what the answer is, you know, if the grass isn't gonna grow back in there, or it's not so bad.
Yeah, not right away.
And so, pot clean outs and, just thank you for noting that, bud.
Oh, a lot, gonna be a lot. Like, I didn't even note it on the map because it would have been marked in just about every ditch.
Well, maybe we need to make a note when we go into drainage to have, uh, farmers, when they're out, if they get out and get planting and rolling dirt around, if they could give us at least a location on some of the major stuff, we could at least check it.
Yeah, you see, I just look, like I said, from bridge to bridge.
Right.
And I saw a lot of it, so I'm sure there's a lot.
Well, we're gonna have a discussion whether we should drone fly over ditches and...
And the, uh, engineering firm out of, uh, Storm Lake is, they're actually doing that now. I don't know if we're visiting with anybody on there or...
Yeah, we, we got something on the agenda later on for that.
Okay. Because I know they started doing it out of their Mankato office, Penelope. I think they were gonna start with, uh, out of the Storm Lake office. I was, I was asked by a couple of counties if, uh, I was interested in getting a drone and flying these ditches while I'm doing my inspections, but I don't have time.
I was gonna say what?
Yeah.
And another thing is...
What five minutes do you have to spare in between doing all?
The, most of those things only run for like twenty minutes on, on a battery charge. Carry a truckload of batteries with you.
Yeah.
It's, I went to a drainage meeting in Minnesota, uh, a couple of years ago, and that's when, um, INS, I think they're, oh, they call themselves, they, they keep changing the name over there.
Yeah.
Anyway, they were at, they spoke at this meeting and they had the two guys that were, were running the drone. And, you know, as long as, if you, you or I go out and buy one, you wanna fly it around off-island, you know, up our yard and stuff like that, you just do it. But to do it commercially, you gotta be licensed like a pilot.
Yeah.
You've gotta do, if you get too close from airport or something, and, you know, you gotta do flight plans and it's like, well, that kinda nicks it for me even. Because I, I did strive to research it to see. But the main thing is for the time, you know, it, it's time consuming. But it would be nice because, uh, in Palo Alto County, I know a couple of years ago, and I don't know how that, I've visited them this year to see how that, uh, had gone, but they had like a million, million seven in FEMA damage on one of their ditches and they declined it. And their reasoning was, is you can't prove that that wasn't like that before this flood. You know, so they were actually, at one point, they were asking me to give them more copies of all the spray records where our guys were on this ditch, and they didn't mark any washouts or beaver dams. And I don't know why they believe us anyway. It's, you know, they don't believe the county.
Yeah.
But, uh, they were trying. But if you fly it with a drone and they take pictures of it, then you got documentation.
Video record, yeah.
It is a good, it is a good idea. And I talked with, uh, another engineer, I was familiar with FEMA. He said, "One of the reasons what happened in Palo Alto County is a lot of these fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollar FEMA claims go right through them." But when it gets over a million dollars.
They get scrutinized.
Then they scrutinize it. And that's what kinda happened with them. So the drone thing is a good idea. We just have documentation.
So as far as your quotes and your spraying, when, what's the timeframe refreshes on when you would start?
We start, with yours, we start pretty much anytime, as soon as it gets fit. Because, uh, you don't have a very high stem density because we've been doing the program for so long.
So long, yeah.
There's not a lot of trees in most areas. There's a couple of areas yet that have some wills, but we've got them pretty well in control. They never get any size to them. So it'd be anytime from when it gets fit till the snow flies. So, and after we, after the pounding we took last year, I'm not gonna give you any specific dates.
No, I know.
This is not good. We had, uh, at one point in time in, in August, we had seven counties started and done finished because we had to keep moving guys around to, to keep them busy. So it's, uh, I know better than to make any promises, especially with the forecast short term.
All righty. You have a motion to accept the quotes?
I'll make, go, you wanna make it? I'll make the motion to accept the, uh, brush control for the drainage district's listed, uh, quote.
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Thank you, Don.
Another thing too, I know, uh, we've done that with our other contracts too. In order for you to be additionally insured by my, my, uh, insurance company without me having to pay extra, if you could just sign off on one of these as accepted, if, uh, and then...
Dave would love to.
I was gonna say, that would be, did you get your weed control?
Are you good with that for the speaking of insurance stuff?
However, it does have a...
That one was the...
Yeah, I called to get on the agenda and they called me back. They, Peggy called me back to thank you yesterday.
Yeah, they were so close, the two quotes.
And I said, "Well, I haven't even looked at the ditches yet."
Well, they're a little ditches in drainage.
Yep. With that, uh, I'll see some cards here again. Anyway, that doesn't have my contact information at their disposal.
Do you have an email address on those?
It's on my card.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna email you that signed, um, quote, but I didn't have your email address.
I finally ran out a couple of years ago on my old card, so it's actually printed on my card instead of having to write it.
You wanna do, brush control, any, uh, I try to keep everybody up to speed on our, our weed control program. If you have anything to add on that.
Uh, I guess, if there's any questions on it, I mean...
Here's your guy, who I talked to.
I would tell you this, that last year when, um, on the blacktop over there going into Eagle Grove, uh, I saw that you'd sprayed and some of the stuff didn't get sprayed or didn't start rolling over, so I brought it to Eric's attention and your guys were out there the next morning and the stuff was, two days later, it was all drooped over, so...
What we're doing is we're doing the, and, uh, your, your maintainer, your, your secondary roads department for the giant ragweed has, uh, is providing us maps.
Right.
And now some of the maps were a little bit off, but Eric and I went in and inspected them to look at it before the guys went out. Some were, some, one of the guys that actually marked, uh, a couple, probably three or four miles, he just saw them milkweed. And like I told Eric, I said, "We don't wanna be that guy."
No, you don't wanna be spraying milkweed.
We don't wanna be spraying milkweed. But, uh, but most of them were pretty accurate. And, and the way we do that is, is if you saw the guys out there, we actually have to drag the holes out and spray the, because most of that ragweed and nettles and, uh, that sort is on the fence lines.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can't move and spray them.
Well, you could, but you're gonna, you're gonna be hitting beans and, you know, and we already got, almost got blamed for a complaint, but, uh, was, we weren't even close to it. I mean, we would do, we did one of these hand treatments, uh, they go a mile and a half away as soon as we got to that complaint. So it, uh...
It's good to have good records.
I was gonna say, that comes back to help us in the long run, so we appreciate it very much.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's ever any questions, that's why, you know, Eric can test this. I'm, I'm available twenty-four seven, basically. If I don't answer, I'll get back to you as soon as I can.
Me well, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you much.
Thanks very much, Don.
Thanks, Don.
Uh, and as always, I always call the auditor's office before the guys come to go to work and then she'll shoot a text out, figure her, her email. I'll let you know when the guys are working.
Will you keep that snow up north and we'll be fine? Further north than you then, all right. Remember which one of these were you ordering?
Yeah, quite all right.
Remember which one of these were you ordering? Thank you. This is the version of set in stone now?
Uh, yeah, kind of. Yes, it is. Well, I know you're used to the neat thing here. She had...
Well, we can get this, yeah.
Everybody has Monday meetings, so, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Which is, you know.
Thanks, Don.
We had to.
Thank you.
Kind of worked together, so, anyway. So, um, this is kind of just to summarize a little bit of what we went through in February at the annual meeting. Um, if you go to tab one, this was not in the book this year, but we still like to show, you know, how, how everybody runs. So everybody else is white it out. If you look at yours, um, you did very well in two thousand and eighteen. Um, sixteen and seventeen was, you know, um, a little higher, but that's the good thing about being in a trust. Um, but your average last year shows you very well. We like to have, you know, with, um, as a trust, we wanna be about ninety percent. So, so again, we drink very well as the average.
We like to be what? What was that number? Eight, ninety?
The trust, the trust, we wanna be around ninety.
Ninety, the whole group.
Because you get much higher than that, then they start checking your rates.
Right.
Right.
But they don't lose money.
Kind of like, you know.
They don't lose money.
So, um, the next page is, we like to show, you know, when you came in and how we kind of, how the trust has helped. So, um, we came in two thousand and five. If you look at the average annual cost increase at the bottom, um, your change in Walmart premium is two point four zero since two thousand and five. And then your PSF funding is five point nine eight. That's exactly what we want. We want the Walmart premium to be lower because PSF funding is yours. So if you don't use it, then you, you know, that's part of your county money. So, um, but the Walmart premium, once that's on, has gone, so you want that lower. So overall, yeah, two point eight eight percent per year or so. Average. So let's see.
Pretty reasonable.
Yeah. So the next one is your two thousand and eighteen claims. Um, you had an average employee count of sixty-eight, average members total, um, one hundred and eighty-nine. You can see that your premium went in at a million fifty-one. Your claims are six hundred and twenty-eight. So you had a really, really great year, a really good year. And you're running really well with PSF this year too. That's your Walmart. And on your PSF, this is just, um, you know, we look at the last number of years and it shows your PSF funding, what you put in and your claims paid. So you'll see, last year you had a pretty high year as far as the PSF. So, um, you did, you were down like five grand. But, um, I think that was kind of decided upon on PSF funding what you put in. You're kind, you have a good reserve, so you can put in less and just kind of pull that reserve down a little bit. Um, you're running really well this year. It's, um, you put in fifty-nine, four and forty-seven, two. So that's an average of about, you're at about seventy grand for annual for this year or so. Um, then at the very bottom, it shows your PSF reserve. So you're doing really well. We normally would say, we like to say, keep six months, that's average six months PSF claims in your reserve. Um, so for you, you look at your highest year, you'd say seventy grand maybe, but, um, you know, again, you're doing really well. So you can use that towards your renewals if you choose to. Um, the next page is the, um, high claimants, if anybody over ten thousand. The member number scrambled, so, you know, we, uh, prohibit them. And if you look under the fourth column, relation, so S is for spouse, E is for employee. On yours, there's no D for the dependent, so all of them are employees and spouses. On yours, there's no D for the dependent, so all of them are employees and spouses. Your next page is your receipts and disbursements report. So that's sent out every month by EBS, and that's going to show, they just line item everything that, that is received from your bill, and then what's dispersed. So if you look, PSF claim funding, the next to last on the receipt, fifty-nine-four has been put in for this year, this is through February. And then your disbursements at the bottom, excuse me, forty-eight-five. Did have one of those dispersed, too, so. And again, your claims account balance at the very bottom. Okay? If you go to tab three, talk about the model. So, prior to ACA, a lot of, a lot of our counties had higher out-of-pocket. And ACA came in and said, "You couldn't have that," so, so they all went down. So we're starting to bring people back up to, to the higher out-of-pocket, and you get a better bang for your money. So if you look right now, your current Blue Cross out-of-pocket is six thousand three hundred and fifty, and twelve-seven-four family. So what we're recommending is you go to seven thousand three fifty and fourteen-seven. And there's a page a little later where I can show, actually, if you go. It's the last page in tab two. Sorry, I said tab three, four. Last page in tab two. So this shows, you have fourteen single and fifty-five families. And so currently, if you take your insured, your Walmart out-of-pocket of sixty-three-fifty, I'll just look at the single, and then your employees out-of-pocket of fifteen-hundred, that gives you PSF liability of four thousand eight fifty per person. That's sixty-seven-nine for singles, and then five, thirty-three-five-hundred for families. So altogether, right now, it's six oh-one-four-hundred. You're funding for fourteen point nine-six percent of that. So about fifteen percent of your people, you would say, would hit the max. So that's eighty-nine-nine-forty, so that's, that's the county's liability at the moment. What we're looking at, I'm sorry, six oh-one-four is the county's liability. So what we're looking at, at the bottom, is using seven thousand three fifty and fourteen-seven. That's going to change your liability to seven hundred twenty-five thousand four hundred. If we keep the same PSF funding rates that are in your single and family right now, you'd be putting in twelve point four. Does that make sense? We can change those rates, but we're just, just for apples to apples, it's twelve point four. So then if we go to the second page in that tab. The fourth thing, I know there are a number of you that came to the meeting, and you have booklets, and when, so Peggy had asked me to do a couple alternates, and once I got started, I found that there was an error. And we're still trying to figure out how that happened, because we have a lot of measures to go through, so. So the, is it in red here? When you're in, okay. That number was just plugged in, and in your book, it was one million one ninety-two four fifty-three. So it was about eighteen thousand different, which skewed your percentages. So we, I do apologize about that. So that's corrected. This is what should have been in your book. So if you look on the top portion of your left, this is your current premium. Now, your PSF funding and all the, all the fees do not change in any of these, in any of these sections. So right now, the Walmart premium is five eighty-two eleven fourteen fifty-five twenty-eight. Your renewal was six thirty-six thirty-seven fifteen ninety, ninety point nine-two, which was eight point four oh. So recommending going to the higher out-of-pocket, seven thousand three fifty and fourteen-seven, that would lower your Walmart premium to six twenty-five eighty-nine and fifteen sixty-four seventy-three, which would put your, you're going to be in six point seven seven. So that's if you keep every, you know, that's if you just change your out-of-pocket, but you keep your PSF funding. So again, Peggy asked me for some alternates, so behind, I have a five, four, and a three percent. So what I did was, again, nothing changed, it's only at the bottom. The only thing that changed is that PSF funding line at the bottom. So for five percent, you put in forty-nine dollars per single, or ninety-two twenty for family. That's going to put in nine point five-two percent on your liability. Four percent would be at seven point nine zero, and three percent at six point two nine. So it just depends on, and then if you go to the very last page, at the very bottom, it kind of, this may have a summary, so you can see, at the very bottom of your self-funding risk review, you know, your three-year PSF average, one hundred and nine thousand annually. You can see what your balance is. So if you, let's say you take the, let's say you take the three percent. So you have your PSF reserve, you put in an extra forty-five thousand six twelve. So if we went with the average, it's possible you could use about sixty-four thousand out of your reserve. And, you know, it's totally up to you if you want to, you know, use some of that reserve. It is, it is, you have plenty, and we can always bring it back up later if you need more funding.
This is why I had Cindy provide some alternatives, because we've talked for a while that our balance is getting up to quite a substantial amount, and maybe it's time to start letting-
And that's some of it, yeah.
And this is what normally we see a lot of the counties doing, because we have been pretty conservative, and so we're getting some good reserves in there, and they're taking advantage of it, and giving it back to the, you know, employees and, and premium reduction and whatever.
So what would your guys' recommendation be, three, four, or five?
We'd be comfortable with whatever you decide.
That's my wonder.
Three percent is fine. Um, you, again, you have plenty of reserves, so we don't see that as a problem. So that's whatever you feel comfortable with yourself.
Where's that reserve amount again, on what, what should we have, is that, here on page?
I actually do have it back here, it's right there.
Oh, right here, okay.
Where was I adding to?
It's right here on the-
I, I thought it was on the other, the other pages, and I didn't realize it was carried over. I missed it there.
So if we have three hundred fifty-eight thousand in reserve right now, and you're, are you saying up here that that's a three-year average?
As a three-year, it's an, it's an annual average. So we say about a hundred nine thousand in PSF funding, or PSF claims.
Okay.
And so if you, so you have three fifty-eight, you're going to add forty-five, if you go in three percent. So if you actually hit the average, which again, like this year, you're, you're around seventy, so if you actually hit the average, you could pull it, you know, take out about sixty-four grand from your, from the three fifty-eight.
Well, I'd probably, I don't know if I'd go down to three, but maybe four percent, I guess. That's my thoughts.
Split the difference a little bit.
Yeah. They could jump all the way down, and then all of a sudden, they gotta jump it back up.
Mm-hmm, right.
I'd rather keep a little of that money.
Just be safe, better be safe than-
Stay rad hole and, and that's my opinion also.
Give a little break.
That's your thoughts, Peggy.
Good decision.
I know, but I like, you're more of a numbers person than I am.
Yeah. Um, I'd like to see something in that three, four range, because that would be a good spot to, to use up some of your balance, but yet provide, provide some relief to the people who are paying the premiums.
Right. Okay. So wouldn't we have to make that decision now, or?
Yeah.
That way Cindy can get the paperwork ready for you guys.
Okay, and that, does that have to be in the-
Otherwise, she has no idea what you're going to do, so.
Is that as being in form of a motion, then, probably, or not?
I would prefer that, if you would.
Okay.
Be the one who's here for me.
I'll make the motion to go for a four percent on the new insurance. And this will start, when will it start? I guess, like, twenty nineteen, okay.
Oh, second.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All of you.
All right, thanks for that. Section three, so currently, you have basic life, through Lincoln, you have basic life of ten thousand, accidental death and dismemberment of twenty. So if somebody should, um, have natural causes, their beneficiary is ten, but if it's an accident, they're actually going to get thirty, okay? So on the next page, we would like to see you add voluntary life. This is nothing for counties that wouldn't have to pay anything. This is just for employees to be able to get a little extra.
Bump it up if they want.
That's right. And they have a guarantee issue of, what we do is, we have, we have meetings. We come and have employee meetings and offer this. They have a guarantee issue at that time, two hundred thousand on the two-four, forty thousand on the south, and ten thousand six months older on, on children. And it's a really great deal, because they ask no health questions. So this is, this is a chance for people to actually get in. And, you know, it is based on their age, so every five years, if you're, you know, fifty now, in five years, it's going to, it could increase. But it's, it's a good deal for them, you know, pretty inexpensive, but it gives them a little extra, a little extra insurance, so.
So these would be done, like?
If, if you chose to do that, what we can do is, we can have personal sheets already done for them, and it'll have, you know, their, their age and how much it would cost, and they can choose if they-
And make-
Yeah, that's right, they don't have to take it, so they can waive if they want to. And we'll show that you are providing the ten thousand and the twenty thousand, that'll be on the sheet as well.
And that just will be pulled out of their paycheck?
Right, it would, yeah, it would be an extra with holding.
It sounds like a good deal for employees to me, because, you know, quite often, life insurance, if you have some kind of health issues, it gets dang expensive, especially when you get up into the sixties.
Right, and you know, and you get to have these kind of, yeah, the hardest kind of-
I'm talking about anything.
What about, we're hanging right below the sixty area.
Yeah. You get up in your sixties, it gets a little higher.
The same with that.
That color of my hair, does it make me look any younger?
I tried, it doesn't help, oh, I'm done doing that.
Hardly, it's still not bad.
Well, is there a sheet on there, we can work on color of the hair?
Peggy, I'll be with you then, we can start an employee meeting.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea.
I think that would, too.
I do, too.
At least give them the option.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a good deal, so. The next page is, you already, this actually comes with your basic life, but I just, we just wanted to remind everybody, this is an employee assistance program, an EEP program, and it comes with the Lincoln product. And I can, if you want some information, Peggy can give to the employees, you know, with me, it's with the employee meeting, too. It's just a twenty-four-seven assistance, if somebody's having some sort of crisis at home, or having an issue that they just need to talk to somebody about, then that's what it's for.
I think that's, we should get that, just for the, the ability that, a lot of people don't like talking if something's going on here.
Right.
And they have the ability to talk to someone that we're out of town.
Right, it's definitely confidential, and, yeah, and, and we haven't pushed it too much, but, but it's definitely, you know, we want to make sure that everybody knows they have it.
Now, with everything going on, I think we need to really be focusing on that. They're talking suicide is up a lot, you know, and everything, and this is a really nice program. All the ones I've seen, you only get three sessions per incident.
It is a good program, right.
And now, this one's four, so this really gives you a good timeframe to be able to talk with people and kind of work things out maybe a little bit more.
Yeah, and again, you already have this, so I can, I can get this, this doesn't have to be July first.
Perfect, awesome.
Yeah, I think that's a good deal.
Yeah, so that's, there's like three different pieces to that. And then the other thing, before tab four, is doctors on demand. That's a new program through Walmart. And what we do at, at your meeting, we're probably going to have everybody, originally cell phones, mostly public cell phones, and once they put that, hit the app right now, because it's really easy to sign up for. I just signed up for it the last time I was traveling. And then they can, you know, so let's say, you have a child with a pink eye, you don't have to leave, you can call doctors on demand, and they'll, you just, they'll look at you, and then they'll prescribe a drug. Or you have a sore throat, or some sort of rash, or things like that. Of course, obviously, they're not going to help with some of the major things, but-
Right.
It is very helpful on those types of things, yeah.
My daughter-in-law, she's got a lot of my grandsons, they don't take them out, and it works really good.
Right, right, exactly. And it does help, you know, for college-age kids, you know, they're not going to go to the doctor's, so, so, you know, it, that's, they're all at their phone. So, anyway, that's another thing we probably talk about at the meeting, and have them do the app at the same time. Okay? And then the last one, this shows current members in the IGHCP trust. We did have Floyd County and City of Hampton up until January first, so we did have them on.
I had a talk with Floyd County before they signed.
Did you?
Yeah, she asked me some questions.
Yeah.
I'm glad they joined.
I am, too. She's, she's a lot of help, I think, but, yeah.
So we're still out pursuing? I mean, other towns, counties-
Yes, yes.
Have the ability to get into our group?
Yes. We just did a quote on one, and we, we need their single, but we just, they just couldn't meet families. And they have that issue, they try, they've been trying to get into, you know, some ways, and nobody can meet families, so. So they're not, they're not, they're waving, and, yeah, we keep trying, that's for sure, if you know of anybody.
Awesome.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you for making the drive up here.
Yeah.
Had a nice day for it.
It was. I came up last night and stayed in for hours.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
That is a long haul.
It is a long haul. But it was beautiful, I got, I only get pictures of this guy.
Were you out of Burlington for all that he had?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Drive careful home.
Thanks, Peggy.
Okay, do we need to go on to Drayney's there, or do we want to finish up and then go to Drayney's?
Well, Peggy, just, she probably has stuff she could do.
Oh, holy. Holy, something up.
Well, we could figure, finish up with her, and then Trish could let us out.
Sure.
If that works.
Okay, we got the reporter's report.
Quarter, quarter of reports.
I remember to give you copies.
I do, I do.
I saw it on the email.
Yeah.
Should it pass around, you should look at it? Okay.
I looked it on the email.
It was just under a million, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's fairly well.
Just a smidge.
A little bit. She got my money, of course, that was for this next quarter though, for boat registrations.
Well, I haven't, I haven't, I don't even remember if I did it last year. I have a jet ski that my children, I should say, it's in my name, it's my kid's, but...
They can't do it.
I haven't put it...
Well, the bad thing about boats, it's once every three years, it's hard to remember, but she's had that sign on the door for quite a while, so... That helps.
When you mentioned the sign, it reminded me, should we put the, um, zoning permits needed noticed in the paper? Again, we haven't done that for, now that we have a new zoning permit.
Oh, yes.
Probably should run them.
Yeah.
Okay. How did it change, so we'll put that in the paper?
Okay.
I would make a motion to accept and place on file the recorder's quarterly report ending March thirty-one.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Carry. Okay, Peggy report.
Here. Oh, just a second. Okay. All right, we could go the first, and then LEC meeting at, uh, City Hall at seven thirty. Of course, we're all here, we had the work session for the zoning discussion after our meeting last week. And that's really my only official thing I had extra last week was LEC meeting. Uh, let's see, Monday I had the LEC meeting there, clear, and then Monday evening, I met with Mary Hansen and Aubrey from Humble Vet Clinic, and we went over the, um, policy book, what do they call it, handbook, or what do they call it for the dog? We're kind of looking at, uh, the one that Fort Dodge almost uses in condensing it, make it more humble-friendly. Theirs was eighty pages, we got it down to...
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, yeah, we spent two and a half hours at it, we're about halfway through.
Wow.
Yeah.
Eighty pages for dogs and cats?
Yeah.
You have to read them their rights when you arrest them, or what?
Just about. So we spent two and a half hours on that Monday evening, and we're back, I think, tomorrow night, hopefully finish it up. And then I had, uh, the Fort Dodge Regional Landfill on Tuesday evening. We had an executive board meeting followed by a full board meeting. And the reason for the full board meeting was to change our full board meeting date from January till October, 'cause every January, weather, weather, weather issues, and when you're trying to get twenty-three different communities or entities together, it's, actually, there's forty-one of them, but we need twenty-three to...
Quorum.
Have a quorum.
Okay.
And we get there, we have twenty, so then we have to reschedule it. And like, sometimes that happens three times, gets to be a big headache, so we're gonna move the meeting to October, um, so that'll help. And then we did purchase, uh, about a five hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment.
Did they get their, um, person to run it hired?
No, we're still working on that.
Still working on hiring somebody to hire?
Yeah, they got, they got a couple of good candidates, I believe, to interview, so we're getting close to the interview process. That's about all I had.
I was at the meeting last Monday on planning and zoning, and then I had a meeting Wednesday night up here at the courthouse with Joan.
I had a meeting, um, on Tuesday, April second, um, it was an executive meeting for the Kitty Cat Daycare, and, um, we're just trying to nail down expenses and what we needed to do moving forward, and, um, we, as an executive committee, put out a proposal to take state pay, um, kids, and, um, we did that by email, so everybody, it's been approved, so, uh, the Kitty Cat Daycare will now be able to take state pay, um, so that we can get more clientele into the Kitty, the daycare.
So that's going to help lift that bottom?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes, it should bring more people in, we've had a lot of people that want to, but they don't get, we don't, we hadn't taken state pay.
That's like a volunteer, is what you're saying?
Basically, yeah, and so, um, that'll help build up, and hopefully it'll help us be able to hire more employees, 'cause you gotta have to have a certain ratio of kids to...
Get that red and black line closer together.
Right, and we're full on, um, infants, but it's the, um, that's a toddler, is the next group, there's like four different groups that we could take, but that's for the employees we have, we're still not full. It's just for the employees that we have, we could still take, I think, seven kids, it was, something like that. So we, if we can get more kids in on state pay, then we'll be able to hire more, and then be at a higher efficiency rate.
Well, that'll help squash some of the rumors that are...
Yes, it'll help.
That we're barely got anybody in, it's...
Mm-hmm, correct. Yep, it's, it'll be a good start.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah?
I'm sorry, yes, that's it.
I was in the planning and zoning, we're part of it, I hiked out early. Tuesday I was up to the pre-con meeting, that was interesting, uh, that's on the Hardy and the Bowdy Rock on Rose. And, uh, Wednesday I had a meeting with John, so we had a meeting at, uh, EMA. We talked about the flood damage and how to report it and stuff to go through, Gazeout County. And Thursday I went on a health visit with, uh, home health aides. All the board, they've requested all the board to go through with one of the visits to see what goes on and what they do. It was interesting. It took about an hour. Um, I guess that's all I had official. I had some phone calls, but I took care of them.
I'll make a motion to go into drainage, do you have anything?
I officially won fourth place in the basketball.
Congratulations.
Good for you. Five dollars.
I got four.
You got four? I was sad to see Auburn get beat, but, so...
Well, I was sad that Michigan State did too, and, but my colleague, or my roommate in NFL was from Texas Tech, so I was listening to him on one side and cheering for Michigan State on the other. Oh, well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Going to go on to drainage?
I'll make a motion to go on to drainage.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you. I do have some things to speak to tonight, so...
I just looked back on the...
And a couple of things, just to kind of keep you informed, but it doesn't require any more data.
Okay.
Okay.
I mentioned two Ben, I don't know if I mentioned any, I was just a guy clicking down on the meeting, they had three new caps, and they all gelled up this morning.
Have a cookie there, very fresh.
Really?
I would say it's more their fuel than the...
Well, no, it was a computer...
Treat schedules back on track.
How would that...
Take two, they're small.
Hey, I have to continue order for...
We watched all this discussion of treats.
I was gonna get one earlier when she was there, but I forgot, sorry, Ken.
Anyway, they had a, they had a guy come out and change something in the software, and, uh, that took care of the problem.
Yeah, that, um, daycare meeting.
Thank you.
Did you use the...
I'll brew it, I will. It wa, it was...
I'll even have a cookie since Eric recommended it.
We highly recommend those cookies.
My landfill meeting, we talked about compost for forty-five minutes.
Oh, man.
And the crazy part is, it was a yes-no vote, there was no conversation, it was just yes-no, we never pointed up, tabling it.
Oh, my gosh, and that's when you want to go, what, are you kidding me?
Forty-five minutes, we talked about compost.
Good deal, know anything?
Yeah, I did.
Then you tabled it?
I can't share it in public. They tabled it.
You want coffee?
Yeah, thank you.
The information from John Torbert.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, I got somebody's agenda too.
Oh, do you, it may be mine.
Okay.
Sorry.
There you go, Sandy.
Didn't I left my bar at home?
I'll get more, and glad you guys have been a good laugh about it later.
Oh, boy. Hello, John.
Okay.
Do you want us to let, do you know?
I assume so. So probably go, I'll probably go, I think Ben is going, that, the information I passed out on the, what do they call that thing again? Applicant briefing, which is kind of like the kickoff meeting for FEMA.
Yeah, we gotta extend it a month, so we gotta get stuff in.
Yep. Um, it's at the same place it was last time, so it's on the very north side of the hospital.
Well, I went down to Jewel the other day, to their ethanol plant down there, and it's on the north side of Jewel.
Yeah, northwestern.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a blacktop that runs out to it, there's a dredged ditch that runs along it. When I was coming back into town, you ought to see that whole dredged ditch, the whole south, be the south wall of that ditch has slid down, I mean, probably the length, probably a good half mile.
Have you been up north of Hardy?
Yeah, that one's bad.
On the west side, there's a huge area that's just falling down, there's really no reason except for, the ice must have brought it down.
I was gonna say, why is it so bad this year?
I think we got that wet, heavy snow, and the weight of it, you know, the, all the snow, we had a quick melt, and the bottom opened up, I think all that big, heavy, wet snow sat on that bank, and then just the weight of the snow slid the dirt down to the...
Okay.
It's really bad along there.
Good theory.
That's my theory.
It was just particularly bad conditions, or some, some perfect storm of...
Yeah. It was...
Why are the roads so bogged up, you know, just tough?
The real wet fall, maybe, then the wet spring, I don't know.
Really cold, and then it's nasty. Bruce made a mention of, which this last FEMA go around last year, and you said it, of notifying people of these slough offs and damages and so on and so forth. Obviously, a lot of them won't get turned in this spring, but...
Well, they have more eyes.
We have sixty days.
We got a date stamp on it.
Yeah, what, what, I mean, what do we got, sixty days from a certain date?
From their meeting.
Is it from this meeting, or is it from the...
It's from that meeting, isn't it?
We have the ability to get more eyes on it with farmers than we do with us running around trying to spot this and that, so if we have, wish our website was open enough that we could put a notice out, but our best avenue would be somebody that would be able to put something...
Publishing that.
You know, we could ask the city to do that too, I mean, people look at the city's website for different stuff.
Or we just need their help.
But they tell me that I'm doing one, I'm out looking around for stuff, and I'm none of them.
Well, that's gonna be the best thing, because...
Is Hopper here?
Looking for a soul.
Yeah, that's right.
Because you mentioned that last year on...
Where is this at?
You have a ghost, any...
This is out, straight east of town.
So your buddy's gotta go look at it.
Not quite that far, I don't...
That is that buddy.
The one we did clean, isn't it?
I'll have to leave it, um...
No.
Six A is...
Well, we cleaned six.
There was, six A one was a tile repair, and that was on the north side of Highway three, and it outlets, and it goes under the Highway three into an open ditch between Marway six and Beaver one.
Yeah.
And it's all kind of silted in, um, need some clean out stuff along there, and I talked to Rick about it.
We cleaned about two hundred feet of it when they did the tile.
Right, just in that...
'Cause there were some silting that come in right off the, 'cause it had a heavy rain.
Yep. Talked to Rick about it, and he recommends just doing a work order clean out, that it should be able to be done. He will, um, determine, you know, what area to keep it under the work order amount, under fifty thousand.
So that's on the, this spot clean out would be on the north side of Roosevelt Inn, or on the south side?
Yep, it goes from Highway three, um, between... Yeah, it'd be like a state down to Roosevelt. So, kitty corner way.
South and west.
Yeah, west.
South and west. Yeah, I've been out and looked at it, um, and it does need cleaning up.
I know Rick had said something about there was a tie, or a road crossing, or tile crossing.
There's a...
But it seems to be fine.
I don't, I don't know what year this was done, years ago, they put a pipe, um, a steel pipe, see the road, got a river bridge, and the guy who put it in, put it backwards, the slope was backwards, so, and they docked him, I mean, it's, it's like this much, it's not a huge amount, but it, and they did dock his pay for that, like ten thousand dollars system, 'cause they figured it wasn't worth the effort pulling it back out for that minor amount. That's what the...
Does it bother anything?
Well, it bothers the farmers, but I don't think it really bothers a whole lot of the time.
The floor that's going uphill of the pipe then?
That's right, so the pipe loses a little bit of its volume.
Yeah.
For a small percentage, you know, so, but that's, that's the issue there. Um, but that has nothing to do with the clean out, it's just a comment I get from farmers occasionally.
Yeah, that, they can notice that.
Well, they, yeah, I don't know if they can notice it, but they know it.
I bet you when the water isn't running very fast, you notice that it's pooling on the one side, it's...
Well, you can see on one side, you know, that it's probably four foot wide, and when it comes out, it's only probably two foot wide on the right on the other side, so you can see it.
And most of those guys know exactly which way the...
Yeah. But anyway, do we have someone lined up to do the spot work?
Um...
Do I get Rick Peterson to look at it?
I'm thinking Yemlin for this one.
Right, Yemlin, okay.
We have Rick Peterson for D D ten, that spot clean out, and some other stuff too. He's got eighteen, he's doing with FEMA orders.
Okay.
So, just thinking of spreading the...
So you want to check with him and see then if they would do that, Yemlin?
Already done.
Already done?
Okay.
You are something today.
So good.
There is concern on that six of the distance, you know, it's been checked out, that, obviously, there's that slough off for clean out, there's some broken outlet pipes, and while he's there, I believe Rick is gonna double-check further downstream on any other repair.
Yeah, there's that one, it's on the same ditch, it's the, it's like a mile away, I think, that Ed Smith had the question on last week possibly, where he wants the tile outlet from the road ditch to the old...
I have taken care of that.
I...
I spoke with Ben about that.
Did you?
Yeah.
And that'll work with him, I believe?
It'll work with him, but do we want Yemlin to do it, I mean?
I don't think so, because then it would be a drainage, then it would be a drainage district issue.
No, 'cause then he has to have the work and the right-of-way permit.
Plus, it would be a drainage district issue, also, if we get a contractor involved.
Yeah, but, uh, Ben won't take care of it, they said they'd do the work.
Did you get that pretty well scored on?
Yep.
There was a little contention there.
It's all taken care of.
There was a little contention there.
Sure.
Did you get, did you catch that?
Yep.
You had a...
Yep.
Okay.
I, I spoke with Ben, it's all, it's all set up, I'll sign the work order.
Okay.
Get it taken care of.
And they'll do it?
Yep.
They'll put a call for it.
Yep, good.
But, so that's a good deal, but further downstream, so to speak. But further downstream, so to speak. I know, sure, the copper's aware of this too. Cause he's been out in that area at some point. Don't just stop at X marks the spot, whether Roosevelt State, whatever.
Do what needs to be done.
Yeah, with, there again, like Trish mentioned, it's still a work order. So, and he's, oh, no, it shouldn't, you know, they always tell you, well, it won't be that much, but we know how that cost can accumulate. But while he's there to address as many issues in that ditch, in that area as possible.
So we're thinking outlet pipes too? Or if they're broken, how do you...
Oh, yeah, definitely while we're there fix the outlet pipes.
Then we don't have to go back.
I mean, cause some of them are private and some of them are district.
But the private ones, we pay for the pipe, pipe.
Since we're already doing the repair of the slough off and stuff and...
Yeah.
And there could be and probably is some more actual just ditch damage further downstream.
Oh, it's very possible, yeah.
So while he's there and if you can get it done, and the copper's aware that they're gonna look further down, and he's gonna talk to Yemlin.
Well, imagine wanting to document any, if it's FEMA stuff.
Yeah, and I think Trish's buddy, FEMA Phil, has to look at anything that would have to do with FEMA.
Cause he has to physically look at everything.
Hmm, he does.
Does he really?
Yeah.
Wow.
People thought measures mean just the whole scope of the thing.
Well...
He'll be very busy.
I was just saying, he's gonna be busy.
But it'd be better to have him making sure that he looked at it and he, I'm assuming would take pictures and... Cause like what Don was talking about, when they are trying to check later on, it doesn't work as well.
Yeah, he will take, he'll take pictures of the damage and give them... I just had a picture on my desk and I didn't bring it in, but it has a length and whatnot on it indicated.
Okay.
Awesome. I did, are you done with that?
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did notice that evidently Doug Marso must've had his, uh, little wood chipper machine up there behind Birdie's.
Oh, he did?
Um, if you go past towards the cemetery, right there in that field in the corner, he must've ran it in there. Um, I mean, it just shreds stuff.
Doesn't really...
But I guess, uh, my next question is, is if we did that whole area, we'd have, probably have to clean, rake it, drag it, something to...
He bought it?
Otherwise, it would run to the...
It'll float downstream.
Yeah, we'd have it into the...
Oh, he doesn't put it in something when it shreds out?
No, it's just on a big mo, or like a big machine that just shoots it. It's like a stump grinder basically is what it is.
Oh, okay, so what isn't like what you see in those things where it shoots into like another...
No, 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 that's a, a branch brush shredder, no. Remember that discussion, old Bruce? I think that, you know, that thing will do some serious damage.
Oh, yeah.
But given, like you said, you could end up with a foot deep batch. That's gonna have, that could be hauled off and where needed. You know, it's different if you're got a little area the size of this table, a brush, you go through it, mulches it up. It'll just kinda decompose, but if you start getting into some trees, which it'll eat through a six inch tree like nothing. You're gonna have a lot of stuff there that we're gonna have to clean up.
Yeah.
So I don't know what, what and how we wanna proceed with that.
Did you talk to Doug at all?
I haven't talked to him. I saw Friday when I came back into town, it looked like it'd been run over in that corner of... You go past those area, that field across the road is, that field right where the ditch comes, it's right there in the corner. You can see it along the road. He ran just a, I don't know, twenty-five foot area there that he'd run that machine in. I haven't run into him to see what his thoughts are, but...
I think that's pretty simple. Like I say, if you, if you accumulate or make a lot of that stuff, cause you're just grinding everything, you're, you're gonna have to use your judgment as far as what needs to be scraped up and hauled out.
Right.
But if it's ground up, you can haul a lot more of it ground up than you can in chunks.
Not only that, but we could haul it over to...
They have a compost?
Compost or...
Compost.
Oh, we'll talk about that later.
Okay.
But, but could you use that for like people, how they do their own shrubbery?
Yeah, they do. Yeah, their people can go out and pick it up for free. They do what the city allows out.
Yep.
That's what I was thinking they...
I think that'll be a good deal on that cleanup.
Um, going back to our agenda, the discussion of possible drone flights on our drainage districts.
Can we go back to six?
I know we were done with six.
That's why I asked if you were done with it.
Are we done with six? Or do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Well...
That's why, I'm sorry.
All right, I'll make a motion for the, uh, spot clean out on T D six lateral eight.
I would, I would third it if you needed it.
With Yemlin's.
She beat me.
Gotcha. We're good.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both carry.
Now, are you done with that?
Now, it's officially done.
Since you told it, the look on my face, I was like...
What? I, I asked.
I thought you meant, yeah, never mind. Comment.
You thought I was wanting to go ahead and make the motion.
Yeah, you know, just from what, um, Don's conversations were earlier, I think flying our ditches.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think you have got an estimated cost on it already from...
Got, um...
Couple of different places.
Two hundred dollars per mile. I believe it is for Rick Hopper, and that includes editing and labeling. And then Phil Jacobs, he does a hundred dollars an hour. Plus, then he'd have to come, you know, that's actual doing it.
And then he asks his office.
And then he'd have to come back and do it again and still...
Well, my question is, if, uh, the flying, say you went across the section and you could go at a pretty good clip, but if you see something, you're gonna, are they gonna stop and take a little bit better picture as opposed to just apply it?
Yeah.
I know, Rick will.
Then they'll document and locate it.
That document locate, then we at least have record versus they just flew through this and no... Well, there looked like there was a tile outlet there. Well, where is it? Then we gotta go investigate to find it?
Who was the other person you said again?
Phil Jacobs with J J G Grant Management.
So, oh, he do the same thing? Will he document and all that?
He didn't know if he could actually do the editing where it labels things.
And if it isn't labeled, it's no good.
But good is it? I was gonna say, that's no good.
Well, then we know it talked to them, we gotta go drag the whole stretch looking for it again.
Which he's going to have to do regardless. I mean, that's what we hire him for, is to go out and measure the area, so I would rather have labels on it to begin with. For our reference in the future.
Well, if he, I mean, if you look at the cost of it, if they find one clean out in ten miles, it'll pay for it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, and then...
For the FEMA, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
I'd recommend going with you.
Rick?
Cause then you gotta, you gotta definitely...
Cause I mean, if we come back and they go back and find it, then that's, that's a waste of everybody's...
How many miles are we looking at?
Lots of miles for drainage district.
I don't know how, how do you want it to, I mean...
Well, do you think that we should do anything that had work done to it last year?
Definitely.
That alone with, you disturbed the soil and the, no, those are the ones that have the highest tendency. That's my opinion.
The last two years, anything that's had work done in the last two years.
See, I don't know. One?
Well, eighteen is the one up there north of Hardy.
Right.
We have a drone flight on that?
What's that?
We have a drone flight on that.
We do, but that was before this winter. That was last summer.
So that's actually good for us.
Well, we'll have to tell, give you a comparison.
We can prove it and say, hey, this is more, yeah.
Well, there again, the only thing we don't have on that is the outlet end, Prairie Creek. They still haven't got us that.
Yeah.
But we, they did that flight about the time they were putting the box culvert in.
Yeah, so that, there, there was, we got evidence that it looked like before and what the film backs that's perfect.
I don't know, I can...
Not again though?
Russ, what?
We'll have to do the three down here. Uh, the one up by Hardy we did was four.
Cause I saw you, you...
And six, three, four, and six.
No, when she said, I just heard her say, I just heard her say Beaver.
Oh, I hear you.
So then you just look at, at your, uh, Beaver. And I heard her say Roosevelt. So I know it's on, this is Highway three, and that's what it says on the north side. So in order to put this over, I have to cut that to that. But I just knew she said it's north, north side of Highway three, between states and here, so...
I'd suggest too.
I didn't catch her saying Beaver.
And that's, that's the hardest thing is when they say, oh, number six. And then to me, I'm, I'm still new enough at it. I'd like to know what section I did.
Right.
Um, but you could, I guess, but I don't know especially how you can stay on the road, look and see that it's underwater.
That's...
Yeah, well, I can't get through the bridge and look at it.
Yeah. Oh, true.
On both sides, well...
If you just got a description of, of that on our, here so that we can look at our map before we begin.
Yeah.
Then, no, we have two.
I know on six, there's some sloughing around the Thor blacktop, cause you can see it. On this south side of the Thor blacktop, there's, that's why I think we need to fly them all.
I do too, honestly, because like eleven, you know, we've had several, several spots where we've done clean out along there.
Well, they'd be all mall, Trish, that they started tomorrow.
It'd take them a long time.
Would we be able to get them done before the deadline?
That's a question, that's a question to ask.
Oh, yeah, I would think so. They just have to be identified by us, I mean, by a landowner or by us. We don't have to have the work complete.
Right.
Started, anything, they just have to be identified. Um...
Cause I would think in a, in a day, they could fly a ditch, the whole thing.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
It wouldn't take that long, yeah.
I bet they could do a couple.
Probably a couple of them in a day.
I would think so.
If they did the longer ones and then had a couple of, if they listed them, it's the longer ones versus a couple short ones that they could work in the area. I definitely think the ones that have had work done, the most recent calendar time would be the... Ones we need to check first.
Okay, and like, do you guys have aware of any structures that might be affected by it?
My house. Oh, I just, I throw that in there and...
I mean, like...
Check the damage if you need to.
One, okay, I got that one here. One twenty-five, the outlet.
Oh, yeah.
That was, that would be the one to note.
Throw them down there.
I know, I already had two.
One twenty-six.
Well, I'll catch up.
Out of town. Well, I always justify it.
Have a cookie.
No.
Grab a cookie.
Oh, no, thank you.
That's my biggest problem.
I suggest we check, there's other people that do these type of drone flights. And I'm not saying we couldn't have two entities. If you're looking for expediency, well, remember...
I mean, I'm all for that too.
Because, well...
But you wanna make sure you have one of those...
Remember, D eighteen, like I said, we just, we know we got, we got a nice flight, late summer.
Mm-hmm.
But we're still waiting. We had the question on the outlet end of that, in the Prairie Creek. We still don't have that footage. And I know the weather's been bad, the ice has been bad, the water's been bad, and so on and so forth. Uh, so we don't have that. Um, I just think we look at a couple other options. I'm not saying that Rick's crew couldn't do some, but if you've got two...
Well, as long as it's comparable in price.
Comparable price and can get to it and do what we wanna do, uh, there's other, there's other drone guys out there that are good, and...
Doug Marso has one.
Yeah.
He told me he had one.
He has a...
He will handle it. I know that.
But that's the thing, if we can't identify the spots, it doesn't do the whole...
Too much to be doing tile stuff and, you know, I, I...
Check with Doug and see what he regards. Well, I say there's a couple, I'm just, this was a very brief deal when we were checking into weed control a year ago. Uh, the Welter outfit, I know they've got a drone. They sent some footages, some stuff. There again, is it to the standards and the labeling and stuff? I don't know, but I mean, it doesn't cost anything to check.
No, it don't.
And we, we've got a basis on kinda what we're looking at for cost.
Okay.
I think there's other engineering companies that have drones.
Wanna explore that a little bit more and bring us some options for next week?
Sure she does.
Mm-hmm. Can you?
And...
But we need to find out how quickly too they can get, they can actually do it.
Yeah, because other counties are in the same boat as we are, so...
We gotta get as quick on the jump, on the gun as we can.
If they tell us that by the same token, I've got three other counties that are already in front of you.
Yep.
Um, well, our timeframe's running just like theirs.
Right.
Did you want to call Rick now and ask him what his idea of how soon he could do it? Or how, how the timeframe is, how long does it take to do one or so?
I just give him a call this week. I mean, he had mentioned something on six.
Are you trying to get something so we can get started on it right away? Is that what you're, I mean...
Yeah, the sooner we get started, the better, I guess.
Exactly. I mean, I think, I mean, I, I like the idea of looking into other ones, but if we also know, maybe we could even have him start the ones that are the worst. You know, if he could do it this week, and then call some other ones, and maybe they could do some other ones, we could say, hey, will you do this, this, this?
Let's, let's, let's throw these ditches his way, cause they worked on them just last year. Three, these ones over here on this side, those six, three, four, and eighteen.
There you go.
Let's, let's give those to him, cause he's done those.
Yep.
And then let's explore the options, if we can find someone else to pick up some of the other ones.
And those are kinda part of the, uh, yes, I agree.
There's no sense delaying it.
Then he's that specific, but we want it now, not six months from now.
Yeah, he's got it, you know, gotta get it rapidly.
Well...
And that, where you're giving him actual location.
That's what I was gonna say, I, I think, why don't we just come right now? I mean, it's not that late.
I would.
Do they got his phone number?
Okay.
Yeah, if you go much past that, Rick, I think you're, you're gonna be waiting and it's gonna get fragmented and we're not gonna, we're gonna end up waiting for a lot of stuff instead of at least getting a little stuff.
Yeah.
Information.
You probably got a minutes phone in your phone too, don't you? You probably got a better, probably a better phone than me, cause my speakerphone is very good.
She can put him on...
She can put him on that phone, that'd be a better phone.
Seven one two three eight oh six eight six three is his cell.
Well, now you're...
Well...
Well, I was looking for it real quick, cause I knew I...
I know, I had it.
I'm not anywhere real quick, but...
See how you are?
Dave, you gonna go up to this meeting?
I'm gonna have to know how many.
Tomorrow?
You're calling, or you're calling somebody?
No, somebody's calling me.
Well, I thought you, I thought when you were in your contacts, I thought...
No, somebody's calling me. That's probably a telemarketer.
I know it.
My wife's going to Des Moines, and she, there's no way she could be down there by now if it's gotten any trouble.
Whenever I look up things, I'm...
Yeah. Probably should've done it on her, he won't answer that number, he probably don't know who it is.
Hey Julie, this is Trish at Humboldt County. Is Rick available? All right, thanks. It's in here. You know, you know, I'm from there. After the fact. Yeah. Um, can you just have him call the office here right away? We're in a board meeting and I need his expertise. Thank you. All right, bye. He was on another line, that's why I didn't answer. But anyway, what else do I have?
Yeah. Bring up some other topics.
Where...
Did our, the deal down south of Pioneer, that was completed? The railroad, the tile with Webster County we were working jointly on, that's, that's in the bag done?
Yeah. Um...
It turned out better than we thought.
Awesome. That's always a good thing.
Really easy solution for it.
And then it would mess with the railroad, wasn't that it?
A broken tile.
Yeah. Um, on D D eighty-eight, I did talk to oh, Mark Daggy, who it was, about his petition and that, and, um, we were discussing the fact that he thinks that there's a great amount of water that comes from the south and goes north into that, so he wants to have an annexation and draw them into the district and then do an improvement type thing.
What?
And that is.
Is that over by that one?
D D eighty-eight. You know, it's down the.
Right down here?
Yep. And he's at the very bottom lobe of it. The, what is it, Franklin Gray and I can't remember the other ones that are involved in it.
Is that out by the, um, off the Gosh Park Road there?
Yeah, well, here's, here's your, um.
Yeah, it comes down and around.
Right there's your road.
And, um, I talked to Rick on that and we were going over it. And he said he has actually had them look at the imagery on that and, um, he is thinking that there probably be actually less acres if they went by the true imagery.
Than what he has on the sheet now.
Than is on the district for now.
That would make a.
So. Did Rick's call? Yeah, he's on.
Maybe she just sleep well enough alone.
I'm just, but.
Well, you are getting to mark that.
I know.
Well, I'll tell him that.
Rick?
Yes?
Hello there.
Hello.
They were calling regarding drone flight.
Okay.
And, I don't know, what's our question?
All right. Uh, Rick Peterson here. Uh, we're looking at flying some of our ditches for, looking for FEMA damage.
Yep, we're well.
Yeah. What is your timeframe on being able to do some? We're looking at flying the ones we've done recent cleanouts on, which would be like three, four, six, and eighteen on the eastern side of the county?
Well, we're gonna be down flying some tomorrow. They're gonna come down today and fly some. Um, I think, uh, four was maybe the only one of those though. But anyway, well, part of six, yeah, we're gonna fly part of six. But it's too windy today, we'll be getting some of it tomorrow. Um, yeah, uh, I'd have to check with the guys and see if they can do more this week or have to get into next week. The longest would be as early next week.
Okay, so you could get right after it, is what you're saying.
Yes, I'd get right after it, absolutely.
And then you are going to document and label the locations?
Yeah.
As to section number and that?
Yeah, well, the section number, um, trying to remember what it takes to get that long, but it's too long to put it on it, but, um, we'll be able to tell the road that's between approximately how far between for sure without any extra effort. Uh, pinpointing the location, I think, I know the drone has the capability, so we just have to make sure we got that.
Okay. Well, those, those, uh, four drainage districts, we're wanting you to fly them and.
Yes.
Which is three, four, six, and eighteen.
Yep, I made notes. Um, yeah, and my guy that does that, because the wind today, he, uh, he's working on something here closer that isn't droning, because it, that strong enough wind that really affects your flying, so, um.
Okay.
So how many miles could he do, Rick, in a day?
What's that?
How many miles roughly could he fly in a day?
Uh, oh, it'd be several miles. What we do flying this much is we have two guys, um, one at the controls and one driving, cause then you could just go non-stop.
Right.
Um, way more efficient. Uh, probably, oh gosh, I should ask them, but, um.
Under a hundred?
Okay.
Under a hundred or over a hundred?
I could safely say under a hundred. I would say, oh gosh, it's so hard to say. It'd be eight to ten probably in a day, but then we'd need a day for that in the office to get everything labeled too.
Well, we're just trying to get it done before our date for FEMA recording, you know, we have to have stuff verified.
Probably fifteen miles, six, that's a huge one, that's huge.
Yeah, yeah, well, uh, I would probably have him, get it written down tomorrow and part of what he was gonna do was six.
You were thought, Rick, this is Eric, you were thinking about six, any way to get some more information on that, I think?
Yes, yes. Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna work with, uh, somebody to get the, the upper end to clean out hourly, but then gonna fly four of it when we're down there.
In this case, your thought is to fly the entire thing?
Yes.
So, yeah, if you started there and you already have that in the works, then just do the entire length of D D six ditch.
Yeah, there you go.
Get started with that one.
Cause I, I walk the trail out that way, I cross it multiple times and there is multiple places there's sloughing.
That's, and that's what we're after, is to document these locations.
Yes, absolutely understood.
Okay, well, get that much done and get it back to us as soon as possible so we can see if it's worth flying the rest of our ditches.
Okay, you bet. No, no, that's a good plan. Good plan, but that.
Cause if we see a lot of it, then we'll probably maybe do some more.
Sure.
Do we want to let us know when, when he's gonna start?
Let us know. Right away.
Yeah, but when exactly, so that we know.
Do you have any time? You're, you probably are, or already are, excuse me, you are already starting on six, so you'll just continue on six and.
Yep.
All right.
And I, and I wanted to get a little bit of Ken that we're gonna be working on just on the upper end, but that, he's probably only gonna spend an hour there, so.
Okay.
So are you seeing any of that way that were, they haven't had done any work to them the last re, uh, year or so that are sloughing?
Yes, we, Winnebago County is particularly bad, um, with slough loss, major slough loss. Where water ponded outside the spoil bank and just created water pressure and just blew out bank.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's, that was our question. We gave you your marching orders on those, I guess, and so.
There you go. Well, and I'll catch my guys yesterday and get things figured out here.
Otherwise, we can probably find a couple of high school kids down here that could ride with them.
That's true, yeah.
Do they internship, apprenticeship?
All our video kids, so.
Video games, so that, he said that was his training for flying the drone.
Right, all right.
Thanks, Rick.
Yep, you bet. Thank you.
Yep, goodbye.
Goodbye.
Bye.
All right.
See you back.
The other one we talked about is on, uh, D D eighty-eight, down there off of two seventy. Right on the intersection, two seventy from Gosh Park Road.
That's the location of it, yeah.
Yep.
And what, he's, he's looking to, he thinks some more land should be annexed in?
Right.
You know, just a little bitty area and it is tiled, looks like we've got some tile in there.
Could be right across from the line where the Vintsons used to live?
Yeah, right there on their corner.
Right in that corner.
He said, uh.
And you wouldn't think that would run to the north, you'd think that'd go towards the river.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
Yeah.
They said a hundred and two acres there.
Mark Daggy?
Yeah. They'd be just, uh, east of where the Vintsons were, the property side in there.
He says that surface wise, it's coming over. Sure. It'd be the spot where, I assume where the, there is not a drainage district on that map underneath it?
It'd be here, down in here.
Do you have any question, Lloyd?
Well, trying to find out. I, if I, that was Rick Hopper. I recognize his voice.
Yeah.
Right now, I can't, unless I recognize your voice, I, I can't really see you.
All right. I, I'll call you later.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Well, excuse me, it's on the west side.
West side of that.
West side of, uh, Gosh Park. Person Farm is in the corner, it's on the west side.
It, it would be along the, the road.
By Becker's there.
Becker's is the place where they moved that house in on the corner.
Yeah.
And it is in between there and, uh, Hannah's Corner.
And, annexed into.
He thinks this land down here needs to be annexed in.
He says there's quite a bit of it that go north now, surface wise, because it even comes through his fence and everything.
Yeah, he's, he's gotta figure out to where Daggy is, and then back to where it's, uh, Becker's, or Becker's in there. Let's take a look here.
Yeah.
The water's, it's cornered here and here. Kinda right corner.
Right.
And the tile is.
This is tile.
This is a tile.
Down to.
Yep.
So where were the?
Where's the Humboldt.
That were right there?
Well, his farm, the farm that he's talking about is right here.
Cause there's where.
That's Alvin.
Okay, there it is.
This is Dave Hannah's place, he farms, he farms just along here.
But all you can do is look at it.
And he's saying this stuff here is turning to the north.
No, do it just for the sake of, you know.
Does it look like it goes north?
Well, then he's talking.
No, but.
Yeah, like Rick said, the tile, cause there's a ditch, and there's something up here.
Yeah, outlets up here at the north end.
Yeah.
I mean, you just gotta.
And he's talking surface water, I.
I'm making blocks there. Take a look, I guess.
And I know, like I said, Rick, look on the lidar. Okay, I have them too.
He looked at them?
And he said, according to that, it looks like the watershed area would actually be smaller.
Well, I, he wouldn't wanna change that.
But, well, and I don't know if he can, honestly, but.
Well, the only you can do, you can have like someone do a lidar on it and see what the elevations are.
And he's, he's concerned with surface water?
Cause he's thinking he wants to do an improvement.
Petition for a larger pipe.
All right. Well, what he needs to do then is put a petition in for a larger pipe, an improvement, and then that study will be done.
Okay.
And then it will get, you know, that's when they do that research.
Right.
They'll go back for the latest records and, and they'll look at it.
The only way that can go is to the north, because if you angle that off to the southeast towards the river, you're gonna go towards that hog site with that big ass lagoon sitting back there.
Well, there is a big, big, uh, ravine back here too that, so, some of that water must run out, like there's really a big ass ravine.
This is not, this is not a very big district, obviously.
No.
Yeah.
It's not a very big district.
And the yellow is the outline.
Yeah, you can petition for it, it can be looked at and.
Yeah.
And he has petitions, so I suppose we probably need to look at that then, pursue it.
Looks like a twelve inch.
Put it on the agenda again.
Oh.
Of course, that would drop to, it would be a twelve inch in there.
Okay.
I need to get my spectacles on so I can wind up.
But it looks like it all drains down to Webster County. All of it.
South of it, yeah.
It all drains south.
Where's it, is the outlet on the north end or is it on the south?
It's on the north end.
That's what it looks like.
On eighty-eight.
Yeah, it drains north.
Mm-hmm, to like a ravine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that goes through Parsons, to the north of it.
Well, you can see it better on here, it's, it's only an eight inch, sixteen inch, and an eight inch branch.
Yeah, the tile is true.
Cause the Gosh Park Road is, is that right here?
Fairly.
Here, to the, yeah.
Yeah. And then, then the one that goes over the blacktop, is where?
You had enough.
C forty-nine.
It looks like it gets a ditch here or creep and runs over going off the north end.
Mm-hmm.
You got your black book again.
It's like a creek, so.
A minute ago. Been there, been there down.
Really great there, so. Oh, I can, I can see what he's up to do. Add some more liars, more people have to pay and put in a bigger ditch.
You seen what you need there?
Well, I don't blame the guy at that either, if it's, if it's draining their land, they. Okay, C forty-nine would be running right to, right here.
C forty-nine is two hundred and seventieth.
So this road, that blacktop that goes over the Gosh Park, the water doesn't run to the north across.
Right.
Currently, he's thinking that, he's thinking more land down in here must go that way.
Right. But I mean.
Very much.
So he wants to add between two seventieth and two eightieth, is that what he's wanting to do, is add that land from?
Well, it'd be.
Cause it, there's a little bit.
It'd be down in section thirty-six.
Right. There's some.
There's a reason why that's not a drainage district too.
Uh-huh.
See, I don't think he farms over on that section thirty-six myself.
Daggy does.
Yeah, Daggy does.
On the northeast corner, or the northwest corner there?
A hundred and two acres in section thirty-six, and then the bank Iowa's got it there where Becker's at.
Well, that's what I wondered.
Yeah. Daggy's got it from that fence line by Becker's all the way to, uh.
Hannah's?
Hannah's.
Well.
You leaving it, Ken?
Well.
Yeah, I got tired of the range.
The, um, he can, so he has petition?
Well, if he has.
Well, then the guy goes through the process.
Goes through the process of what he.
Who do, who do we want to appoint to look at it?
Rick posted for the other stuff already. The lidar thing.
Is he, is this, he filed a formal petition? What's that?
He just said, is that the, uh, the bone directory?
Oh, it's not the actual, I didn't get a.
Probably the best. She said she's gonna put out on the calendar for next week.
Yeah.
I said that.
Um, just wanted to let you know that I Dale did pay on thirty-five grand, see?
Oh, the, the Agwell?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They did, uh. Hundred and seventeen thousand.
Oh, that's a dime.
That, that's how much you're, you're supposed to pay?
Yeah, cause they got a ten percent percentage until the project's done and then we get that back.
Okay.
So.
All right, what else you got? That's it?
I think so. So, who's the one who's plans on going tomorrow?
I am.
And that's where, over.
Uh, Algonah.
Algonah.
I'm probably not.
North end of the hospital.
Trish, are you gonna go to the, moving in Clay County?
Are you going?
Yes, I am going.
Okay, I'd like to go.
Okay.
If I'm sorry.
District, day, district meeting?
Yeah.
When's that?
Nine thirty.
Well, not tomorrow though.
Wednesday.
Cause I was gonna say the other one's tomorrow, but.
Was it that EMS meeting we were talking about?
Yeah, it's just one on.
What is it for a drive up to Clay?
At nine o'clock? Yeah, how come we're on there now?
How come are we?
EMS conference room.
Pokies.
Pokies?
It's on the north end of the hospital around, where you go in and you go around the north end and. And, uh, there's an EMS building back there on the back side.
Oh, hey, where did everybody go? We got a first and second and third out.
First, second, and third out?
A drainage, and then.
You have anything else?
No.
Okay, motion to go out of drainage.
I'm motioning my range.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Okay, nothing else to come before the board?
I have a question. Did you get this Humboldt County zoning sheet?
Yeah.
In the packet? What, what's up with that?
Yeah, what is that?
That's out here at the airport.
That's out here at the airport. Uh, they're going to add on, in fact, that.
Oh, is that the hangar?
They're going to put a maintenance shed.
Oh, that's what it is.
On the driveway going up to the hangar.
Snow removal.
Up to the airport, they're going to put a maintenance shed between there and Peterson property. It was armory. They've got the fence line in there and they, they're going to put it inside that fence line. I talked to them and I approved it.
Okay.
A month or so ago, a couple.
So that's what this is all about and they're not going to build it till next year?
No, it's, I talked to Travis on it and he said, well, it's in the county, so we have to approve it, but it's, it's city property, so.
Okay. Well, that's all good to go, just to ma, I think it says fifty by fifty-three square.
Yeah, it's just a maintenance shed to put snow removal equipment in for the airport.
Airport. And the city's going to park some of their stuff in it, too.
Yep.
Sounds good to me.
Yep.
That's, just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, anything else to go before the board?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both, Gary.